Welcome back to our award ceremony. It's an opportunity to recognize board members individually and in boards for their exceptional work this year to support our programs. We're also going to have a couple of special awards to some board members and staff that we're going to recognize them. So, we appreciate all of you joining us, special guests for joining us and supporters for joining us because you're also going to hear some great speakers, student speakers that talk about the, you know, the impact that AMI Kids has had on them. And I want to start it off with Derica from AMI Kids Orlando. She's going to talk to us about why she feels Orlando is a safe place for her and how the staff take the time to listen to her. So, please welcome Derica.
AMI Kids Staffboy, thank you for taking the time to listen to my story this morning. My name is Derica Lambert. I'm from Richmond, Virginia. I'm the baby of the family. I'm the youngest of seven and I always have been a Muslim since I was in PK. My dad wasn't in my life like a father should be, which made me disliking not getting along with him. Outside of school, I was very happy and active child. I love being outside dancing with kids. When I started sixth grade, I was getting in trouble back to back. My mom was getting very stressed because she always ended up coming to me out of school for after lunch. In the middle of my sixth grade year, my mother moved her and my brother-in-law to Orlando for a first fight. I made some good friends, I made some bad ones too. I was so angry when my mom asked me. My grades were amazing. Even though I was getting in trouble, I already knew my grades were good. It's okay, my mom was very angry at me. I thought I had a bad system. By ninth grade, I went through depression, which made me very angry because I hate to feel a bit hurt. I was bankrupt a few times for my actions. Getting bankrupt really opened my eyes up. I met kids who were going through the same thing I was going through and I met someone who was worse than me. Talking to other kids around my age group made me realize why I want to be like it or I want to become a counselor. I haven't made my mind about if I want to work at a school or not, but becoming a counselor is not going to be about the money. It'll be about helping others and showing love. In 10th grade, I wasn't getting in trouble at school that much because my problems started to happen at home. My dad got very sick and everyone felt bad for him. But I just couldn't have sympathy for a man who didn't want me no part of his life. He called every day to tell me how much he loves me. He even helped pay for my sweet 16 party. Two weeks after my sweet 16 party, my dad passed away. His last phone call is that he wanted to talk to me while I was asleep to my mom, so he needs to call tomorrow. The next phone call he received was informing us that my dad had passed away. I don't know why, but I just started to cry. But I'm talking about a man I hate so much. I got so angry, I took it out on my family and friends. I got so mad one day that I just snapped on my mother and brother to the point they had no choice but to call the police. I got arrested. I didn't bring nobody but myself and my actions. It made me realize how much I wanted to miss my dad. I wish I could tell him how much I love him. Now I'm going to learn free and I'm going to AMI Kids. This will help me learn how to control my actions and get along with others. I still get upset, but I like the fact that I can talk to staff and they will listen and understand my apology. AMI Kids have different counsel groups, like MRT and Vocational that helps me with social skills and life skills. Another thing AMI Kids helped me with is expressing my feelings and teaching me how to use youth coaching skills. When it comes to school, my teachers are there to assist me when needed. These chances I earned, I have earned the opportunity to become a part of school community. As a member of school, I will walk through the responsibility and model in the expectations and rules of the program to my fellow peers. I'm truly thankful for the staff at AMI Kids and everything the staff has done for me. This is just the beginning of me becoming a younger, but I know I'm going to help you later on in life. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you, Derica. I just want to take the time to really thank our sponsors, MGT Consulting, which is our title sponsor for this event, M.E. Wilson, Hillward and Henderson, and Marsh McLinlin, McLinlin Agency and Besard Insurance. And I will pass it over to Justin to give out our first board award.
Great. Thank you, Mike. I'm excited to be here today to present an award for resource development. This award goes to a board that is no stranger to successful fundraising. The board has consistently provided substantial development work and fundraising in support of their program for many years. Most recently, however, they increased their already notable annual fundraising by 25% over their fiscal year 21 goals. The board also executed a successful letter writing, I'm sorry, writing campaign raising over $160,000 in lieu of their annual croquet tournament. In addition, they sent out an annual push letter raising an additional $90,000. There's nothing sweeter than lemonade when the world gives you lemons. AMI Kids Beaufort, congratulations on this award for an exceptional year of fundraising and resource development.
Hi, I'm John Williams, Chairman of the AMI Kids Beaufort Board of Directors. It's with great pleasure and appreciation that I accept this award for resource development. It's been a tough couple of years, both of them with me as chair, of course. With the pandemic, we've had to change our approach to fundraising, still have had some success. Typically, we do an outdoor croquet event, which over the last five to eight years has raised about $100,000 each springtime. Couldn't do that this year. Once again, the owners of the property where we hold the event said no, and we thought it was the best idea because most of our contributors are of a certain age that would put them more at risk. So, we decided not to do the actual croquet event. What did we do instead? We reached out. We used a combination of traditional media, social media, but mostly we use the old-fashioned reach out and touch. We made phone calls, we sent emails, we saw people in person with a mask to say, hey, even through the pandemic, even through not seeing you for a while, our program is still doing great things and our program still has needs. Our air conditioning units are still failing. We still have roofs that need to be replaced. We still have all sorts of things on our property that need to be updated and fixed. That's where their contributions come in handy. We had people who gave anywhere from $10,000, $5,000, $100, and $50. As of about a month ago, we'd cleared our goal of 100,000 and we're pushing to 110,000. So, we're very thankful for our supporters. We have a great board of directors. A special shout out to Mike Ingram, former board chair in Beaufort, who has a wonderful connection of a network, really, of people who support our program and are strong donors and certainly to our staff. They keep us going and they keep the boys doing the right thing. So, again, on behalf of the full board and our staff, thank you very much for this recognition and keep doing the good work.
So, this next award hits home for me, so I'm really excited to be here to present another resource development award. With COVID and living in uncertain times, this individual took a task of organizing AMI Kids Tampa's 21st Annual Golf Tournament in the month of November. With the support of the board of directors, Andy Peluso was able to strategically plan and execute a quote "COVID-friendly golf tournament." With his leadership, AMI Kids Tampa was able to sell out of sponsorships and teams, bringing in over $35,000 in revenue to the program. And zero cases of COVID came out of the event as a result of his planning and execution. Please join me in congratulating Andy Peluso.
Good afternoon, everybody. First, I just want to say that I've really enjoyed planning the shooting and golf tournaments for AMI Kids Tampa the past few years. I've worked with some really great people who have given a lot of time and effort to make these events successful. So, I just want to thank some of them this morning. First, Carlos Valdez, the Executive Director down here in Tampa, just spends a lot of time, gives a lot of effort to planning these events as well. JB Davis, Chairman of our board, same thing, lots of time and effort. Lots of his friends and relationships are the ones that actually sponsor these events. Erin Seashultz, she was the Business Manager here in Tampa for a long time. Now she's moved on to the national organization. Jamie Wilson, a board member here in Tampa, who previously ran these events and shared lots of helpful tips, advice, information. Virginia Wright Placiris, she's probably never going to see this video. She's just a volunteer. She's not on the board, she's not on the staff, but she's been extremely gracious, selfless, and given lots of time and effort to helping the raffles and silent auction portions of these events. And then, just all the staff and other volunteers for these events, you've helped with some truly great events the past few years. Second, I did want to share a piece of advice that I've received to any young or new board members or volunteers who may be watching and may be wondering, how do I contribute? How do I make a difference? The best piece of advice that I received when I joined the board here in Tampa was, if you have the time, find the thing that your board does and needs help with that the other board members just might not have the time to do and do consistently. It really does make a big difference to the school. It helps you learn a lot about the school, especially when you first join, and it also helps you develop relationships with the other board members and staff, which is obviously very important. So, anyway, thank you for this wonderful award. I'm honored and very grateful. Thanks.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we're on award number three for community development. Am I in the right place, Mike? I believe I am. My name is Trey Traviesa. I have the great honor of presenting award number three for community development. The awardee is AMI Kids Greater Fort Lauderdale. The entire AMI Kids team from Greater Fort Lauderdale and board rallied this year to raise for the rebuilding of the new pool. Total raise was 150,000 and the board raised about 50,000 in a two-year span, with most of it coming this past year. Some came via matching funds, which would have not been possible or not for the board's continued efforts. So, congratulations to AMI Kids Fort Lauderdale for the Community Development Award. And I have to also just add that I think it's fitting that the Community Development Award goes to the program in Fort Lauderdale and Broward, which was the birthplace of AMI in certain respects and the home of founder Judge Frank Orlando. So, to the AMI Greater Fort Lauderdale team, way to go for honoring with your actions the great leader that came from your backyard. Congratulations.
Hello, everyone. It's an honor to be recognized for this award and for the hard work everyone involved within our program has put in to help us achieve our goal and support the AMI Kids mission. I would like to especially thank Mike Thornton and the support of home office. Without their assistance, this would not have been possible. I'd like to especially thank Chad Cadwell for his tireless dedication to supporting our efforts and our program. He has worked tirelessly and his enthusiasm and support has been invaluable. I'd also like to thank our previous Executive Director Felix Colazo. Felix lived and breathed our program and his dedication to AMI Kids Greater Fort Lauderdale was evident when he spoke within our community. Thanks to those efforts, we've been able to recruit new members to our board that shared his enthusiasm and have been the driver of our community development efforts in the last couple of years. Thank you again to everyone who has supported us and I look forward to a successful and bright future for our program.
Excellent. Thank you very much. And award number four for leadership. This award goes to board member Jennifer Kendall. Ms. Jennifer Kendall has served as the board chair for two years, exhibiting leadership and dedication to all whose lives she's touched in this role. As chair, she's demonstrated an attention to detail, diplomacy, and a cheerful disposition that she brings to all of her association endeavors. Mrs. Kendall's relentless commitment and dedication to the program through a myriad volunteer efforts and for the significant contributions she's made to the nonprofit and philanthropic program, we believe she embodies the vision of White Pines Leadership. Congratulations to Jennifer Kendall for her outstanding board leadership.
Good afternoon. Thank you very much for this award. I must first acknowledge some amazing people who are connected to AMI Kids White Pines. First, Mr. Ricky Hardy, our former Regional Director, who was instrumental in joining the AMI Kids White Pines Board. Our current Regional Director, Mr. Michael Wright, who leads us with passion and challenges and inspires us as board members. South Carolinians are truly blessed to have White Pines and the superstars who, day after day, contribute to successful outcomes for the young men that they serve. That's Mr. Laquinton Irvin, our Executive Director, and the White Pines team, who through some difficult and challenging times, have maintained their commitment to transforming lives. To my board colleagues, especially our Vice Chair, Ms. Beth Rainey, thank you for your commitment to supporting the work that is being done to enrich the lives of the students and families that are supported by White Pines. There is a lot of great work that is being done by many throughout the AMI Kids family. Thank you to every AMI Kids staff member and the many volunteers who support AMI Kids programs. On behalf of everyone who have made the commitment to serve as an AMI Kids board member and for your recognition that all kids have value and potential, I humbly and proudly accept this award. Thank you.
Okay, I have the pleasure of introducing the next speaker. The next student speaker is from AMI Kids Tampa. Cedric is enrolled and has been enrolled in AMI Kids Tampa for about six months. He's going to share his experience at AMI Kids Tampa and how he's back on track in education and working for the first time. Cedric?
Greetings, AMI. My name is Cedric Delauter. I'm 17 years old and a senior at AMI Kids Tampa. I'm also an inspiring business owner. Today, I'm going to explain how AMI Kids Tampa is changing my life for the better and putting me back towards the track of success. Before arriving at AMI Kids Tampa, I was going towards the wrong path. I was fighting, skipping school, and being very disrespectful towards my mother. After getting kicked out of my traditional school, Howard W. Blake High School, my mom was told about AMI Kids Tampa from a friend's who's son attended. She asked me if I was interested and I responded with, I'll see after we do a program tour. At first, I wasn't sure if I was interested, but after the tour, I felt a lot more comfortable and saw all the opportunities AMI Kids Tampa had to offer. While attending AMI Kids Tampa, I have improved my ability to fluently hold a conversation even when nervous and under pressure. This ability is very important to me because after attending AMI Kids Tampa, I struggled to hold conversations with people who had amazing opportunities for me, but I didn't have the best conversational skills and missed out on all those opportunities for myself. I started getting interested in leading tours when I first got to AMI Kids Tampa, when I saw another student giving a tour to a man wearing a suit who looked important. What really intrigued me about this was that the student was also dressed professionally and as well as his smooth conversation that was going with the man. One look at that and I knew that was something I wanted to do. After the Executive Director, Mr. Carlos, accepted my request to lead tours, I felt as if I had been gifted with a golden opportunity. About a month or two later, another golden opportunity fell into my lap when I lead tour for a gentleman named Steve Gonzalez. After conducting the tour, we had a heart-to-heart conversation where I learned he was the owner of a catering company named Catering by the Family. He seemed to enjoy the tour I gave him so much that he offered me a job. With this, I decided to turn my life around for the better and take the necessary steps to achieve that goal. Taking those steps has opened up other opportunities for me that I couldn't even imagine happening during this period of my life. Thanks to AMI Kids Tampa, I have improved my conversation skills, started my first job, and improved my relationship with my mother. My mother and I talk more now than we used to and I haven't been disrespectful towards her. Thank you, AMI Kids Tampa, for what you have done for me and with me. To close out, my final remarks are, don't let your nerves determine your ability to achieve things in life. And in given time, you will achieve every goal for yourself as long as you are allowing yourself to go down your destined path and not your troubled path. Thank you for allowing me to share my story.
Okay, next award, it's a Resource Development Award, and there are many reasons why this next board is receiving an award of excellence in resource development. This outstanding volunteer board exemplifies engagement and reinforcements in the importance and effectiveness of quality stewardship efforts. The board has been thoughtfully and strategically pushing out positive messages about their program on social media throughout the last year. Because of those efforts and others like them, they have used that momentum to build a brand awareness and increase the fundraising across the board. Using consistent communication, relationship management, and local family foundation that has supported the program for years, increased and increased and already and steward a long, strong relationship with local other owners, this local Kia dealership, leading the owner, leading the owner to and friends' programs to double their annual giving in 2021. This impressive group also solicited multiple community partnership agreements in support of the $1.5 million Youth Bill grant awarded last year. And finally, they were awarded $52,000 of Triumph Gulf Coast Inc. funding to support their program. A grant application led by outstanding board and supported by Sherri Williams, Executive Directors of AMI Kids Pensacola Board. AMI Kids Pensacola, congratulations on the outstanding year of resource development.
It is a great honor to be nominated for this award, and I thank those who nominated our program and to the Executive Committee for showing such faith in our program. Of course, any successful program has a team of people, and we certainly do at AMI Kids in Pensacola, from our Executive Director and staff, and of course, a very, very supportive board that has done an incredible job to help with the fundraising. We are particularly proud of our Youth Build Program. We feel like we're making an incredible difference to the youth of Pensacola. And again, I appreciate the award, excuse me, appreciate the award very much, and so does the staff and the board members of Pensacola. And we look forward to another very, very successful year. Thanks again.
Okay, the next award is a Community Development Award. This young man himself has taken the lead on organizing and working with the young professionals that make up AMI Kids Tampa Junior Board. With the support of the Executive Director, Aaron Jimmison, as coach and mentor of AMI Kids Tampa Junior Board. The purpose of the junior board is to serve as a pipeline and recruit young professionals as future board members. As members join the junior board, they are asked with the assistance of Executive Director of Plan and Execute Social for Social Change Events, which has held twice throughout the year. Aaron has been instrumental at mentoring the young professionals. He now has two young professionals that have become active full board members and has two more making it a current cohort. Please join me in congratulating Aaron Jimmison.
Hi, my name is Aaron Jimmison, Treasurer of AMI Kids Tampa. I am honored to be accepting the Community Development Award given by AMI Kids. Since 1971, AMI Kids Tampa has been helping at-risk youth achieve their goals. While it feels great to be helping others, it is especially rewarding to be helping these youth that have such long and bright futures ahead of themselves. Many of the youth that enter AMI Kids come from difficult and unfortunate situations. While I can't profess to understand what that's like, I do know that I'm blessed to be able to provide my support to AMI Kids and our mission. I would like to extend a huge thank you to JB Davis, Chair of the Tampa Board, for introducing me to AMI Kids, to our incredible Executive Director, Carlos Valdez, and to our amazing local board, and then also to AMI Kids Corporate for their guidance and support. This organization as a whole deserves a lot more recognition and attention for the work that we are performing. Let's keep after it. These kids are counting on us. Thank you.
Do an annual tribute to the family members that were lost, and so please join me in watching this video. So, our next student speaker, Malachi from AMI Kids Space Coast. He is 18 years old. He's from Winter Haven, Florida. He recently graduated from high school and he's very creative. So, let's listen to Malachi.
Good morning. My name is Malachi Clevenger. I'm 18 years old. I graduated high school while in my program. I'm going to be going to college soon. I'm from Winter Haven in Polk County, Florida, and I'm very creative. I love to draw and write music. I also sew clothing and enjoy graphic design. I even sew designs on Instagram. My habits led me to my placement in the Women's Center for Professional Growth at AMI Kids Space Coast. I wasn't comfortable and content with myself. I live fast, money motivate me and make me feel important. I didn't strive to achieve anything other than money and created my sense of importance. I let it get the best of me and have a profound effect on my life. Throughout my enrollment at this program, I've had the opportunity to reevaluate my situation. If it wasn't for this program, I would have forgotten myself into more trouble and a worse predicament. This program has allowed me a second chance at becoming a productive adult within society. I now have my high school diploma, which I earned at this program. I am enrolled in Eastern Florida State College and I aspire to be an entrepreneur and make jobs for others while giving myself a stable income. I want to earn a degree in business or economics to help me develop a business plan to get my career started. Well, at this program, I've learned how to accept it out of my control and how to be grateful for things even when they seem like they're restricting me. Some people would take being away as a negative. Some people would take being away as a negative, but I see all the positive in it. I see the opportunity for growth. I've learned to keep my composure and not take things personally. I will not let others' negative tones affect me. I've also learned many technical skills while in this program. In NCCR construction, I've learned how to saw straight and measure precisely. I'm CPR and First Day Certified, and I have OSHA certification. I want to thank all of you for taking, giving me this opportunity to speak with you. Have a nice day.
I'd like to, uh, take a moment here to, uh, to, uh, oh, oh, provide an award for governance. Uh, the following board member has led the charge in reestablishing AMI Kids' mission and purpose with our local agencies. She was instrumental in setting up meetings with the Chief Administrator Office, the Chief Administrative Officer at our mayor's office to help reestablish a positive relationship with local entities such as the Office of Juvenile Services, East Baton Rouge Alternative School Leaders, the Community Outreach Liaison for East Baton Rouge, and the Federal and State Grants Coordinator for East Baton Rouge. Uh, these meetings led to building partnerships with local, uh, government agencies that help AMI Kids Baton Rouge with recruiting young people within the community. Congratulations to Donna Mayo for the, uh, for the recipient of the Governance Award.
I'm Donna Mayu from Baton Rouge, and, um, I am here to thank you for choosing me to receive a Leadership Award. And I'm going to do some moving around here for just a second. We're blessed to have a Department of Labor grant, a federal grant, that lets us take kids from the parole and probation section of our Office of Juvenile Justice. We're also blessed to have a mayor-president in Baton Rouge, Sharon Weston-Broom, who was instrumental in helping establish the AMI Kids program Baton Rouge years ago. So, I'm not telling you how many years. So, when she opened a program for part-time summer employment this past summer, AMI Kids was invited to study and to, uh, work with our kids to try to get, to get placement in that program. Our executive director and our regional manager have been critical to our continued support and relationship with city parish government. All I've done is set up appointments, make introductions, and attend the opening meetings. They have picked it up from there. So the real leadership comes from our great AMI Kids staff. So thank you, Lolita, and thank you, Isaac. We appreciate what you do.
Congratulations, Donna. Uh, I will now be presenting a Community Development Award. Laura Branch has ensured that AMI Kids has been able to give presentations to groups even when the whole town was closed due to COVID-19. She's been leading the charge to get us featured on the front page of the paper, resulting in four youth enrollments. Laura also turns our pictures into stories that must be read by more than 5,000 Facebook followers. Laura's been a true lighthouse in the storm during the past year. Congratulations, Laura, from AMI Kids Pensacola.
Hi, AMI Kids, this is Laura Branch coming to you from Pensacola, uh, the Western Gate to the Sunshine State. We're excited to see you virtually. Sorry that we can't be together in person. But, um, just wanted to say thank you for recognizing Pensacola for our resource development efforts. I know every single program, um, has faced a lot of issues in the past few years uh, being creative with your resource development. So, um, want to give all of you a pat on the back as well. Specifically, our teams in Pensacola, we've got two programs, one at NAS Pensacola and also a workforce development program, um, separate from the Naval Air Station facility. And just wanted to chat with you about some of the efforts that we're doing. If you know anything about Pensacola, you know that, um, our educational outcomes are not ranking real high, um, within the state of Florida. In fact, we're in the bottom five in terms of educational outcomes. And that's due to a variety of factors. But, um, we see a lot of kids, um, with needs in the community, including our students especially, um, needs including food, lack of food, um, shelter, transportation. And those are not unique, I know, but a lot of our resource development has been focused on the needs of our students, including, um, our fundraising efforts. So, um, real quickly, I'll, I'll share with you that we were lucky enough to find a partnership with an organization called Food Raising Friends. And what they do is every month, they come and deliver 20 bags of food to the workforce development program, and Ms. Sherry's team helps distribute that. And what the food does is provides these kids and their families with food, um, everything from bread, non-perishables. And every month, that is equal to about a $1,700 donation, which we're really lucky, um, to have because that sustains the kids when they're sitting in our classrooms. That, uh, stains their brains, encourages them to learn, gives them an incentive to show up to class. So, we're really grateful for that partnership with Food Raising Friends. Um, also grateful for opportunities to get involved. AMI Kids isn't super well-known in the community. We're working on it, but we found that a big way to get the word out is to, um, volunteer. And Reggie and his team over at the Boys Base have recently volunteered for the Pensacola Triathlon, um, just setting up barriers, um, doing whatever is needed of them. And in return, the race director gave us a really nice, uh, contribution, which was very helpful to our program. So we're grateful for that as well. Um, as you know, Sally, uh, last year really impacted our program. Um, the workforce development building took a big hit to the roof. So we went through, um, the process of finding contractor, um, a roofer to help us repair that. And it ended up that they really took a love and a connection to our program. In fact, after they were done putting the roof on, they taught a class to our students. Talked about the ins and outs of that career field. Um, talked about the advantages of being in a roofing industry and how big the need is for employees in that area. So they demonstrated, let the kids, um, interact, pound some nails in. And it was a really neat experience to see a company of that caliber, of that size, really come alongside us and not only improve our facility, but improve the lives of our kids as well. Um, other connections that we have are with The Secret Place. It's actually a human trafficking agency that helps to combat issues related to human trafficking. But they have actually come alongside us and helped with tutoring for a lot of our students. Um, they also offer therapy sessions. Um, so it's been just a wonderful relationship, uh, to, to have them alongside of us as well, and we're grateful for them. Um, and finally, you know, our bingo connections continue to come through. Um, Beachside Bingo has been such a wonderful partner, and every month, um, they've been wonderful to contribute to our programs, and that's been very helpful as well. So, um, hope to connect with all of you during, during the Board of Trustees meeting. And I just thank every one of you, oh, and especially Jesse Rigby. Um, he deserves a shout-out as well. Appreciate you, Jesse. Bye.
I will be presenting a Community Development Award next. Uh, the next award recipient has been affiliated with AMI Kids, uh, Clay County for the past three years. He loves spending time getting to know our kids and has always reached out to a kid who needed something like encouragement, guidance, motivation, and even tangible things like shoes. Uh, he has been a driving force, leading the way for the Clay program to move forward for a new, with a new facility. With the help of this board member and Valid Court Construction, they were able to secure a new facility through their contacts with the city of Green Cove Springs and the mayor. It is apparent that this board member holds a special interest in the mission and vision of AMI Kids and wanted to be part of changing kids' lives. Congratulations to Troy Betts for being recognized for community development.
I just want to say thank you for this award. Um, it's a great honor. Um, AMI is, is a wonderful program that I'm thrilled to be a part of. I, I, I enjoy the work. Uh, we have a board that, uh, is, is really coming along well and doing a great job. And I, I'm, I'm thoroughly have enjoyed working with the ED and the Career Counselor at Clay County AMI Kids. I honestly feel this award should, should be going to them. Uh, I, I really feel that I pale in comparison to what it is that they do and the passion that they have for these young men. I was the benefit of some, uh, male mentorship when I was a teenager. And I really relate to these young men. So it's just a truly an honor and a pleasure to be able to work with them and help it be a part of their lives. So I just want to say thank you to AMI for, for all that AMI does. And, uh, please keep up the good work, and we thank you all. Thank you.
All right, our next student speaker is Yasmin DeBose from AMI Kids Pensacola Workforce Development. She is an exceptionally young lady who has worked to overcome many obstacles over the last two years. Currently, she is AMI Kids Pensacola Student Government President, Government President. Please give a warm welcome to Yasmin.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Yasmin DeBose. I'd like to say hi, AMI Kids has impacted me. I've been going to AMI Kids Pensacola for the last two years. During that time, I've been getting my GED core in carpentry. I've already passed one GED final, and I'm currently working on other three subjects. I've also earned my OSHA ten core, and I'm currently working to earn my carpentry certification. Before I came to AMI Kids Pensacola, I was not talking to person. I always followed, I always followed the rules and did what teachers expected from me. But sometimes it felt too much, and I felt worthless. I knew I could do better, so I would try. I would talk to the teachers. I felt that they did not care about me. Because of this, I would shut down and not talk or participate if teachers would ask me to go home. As I looked around my old school, I noticed there was always fighting, and kids would be aggressing for smoking weed at school. This only made my anxiety higher. Then to add to that, the teachers were not willing to teach because it appeared as a negative environment. So I dropped out of school when I was at a very low point in my life. I did not see help coming from school. After I stayed home for a few weeks, I began wanting to get my GED and better my life because I know I cannot go anywhere without education. I still felt anxious and did not want to be around a lot of people. My mom encouraged me to sign up to AMI Kids Pensacola because my brother had, went to them, and they really showed they care about him and wanted to help, not just my brother, but my whole family. So I signed up even though I was very shy and did not always have a good attendance because of this, because of my social anxiety. They never gave up on me. Ms. Sherry LeVoy called me every day and was determined to help me find the job near my house, or pick me up to go to school. There were periods of time I would not attend because staff has changed and I did not feel comfortable around new people. As I said earlier, they did not give up on me, and pretty soon, they had me involved in core, in culinary. Ms. Tori talked to me about owning my own restaurant one day and helped me map out steps to follow my dreams. Despite my social anxiety, Ms. Sherry Williams asked me to first be a representative for AMI Kids Pensacola at last year's legislation day and a keynote speaker at Kowani's meeting. While at the meeting, someone asked me, "Why such a pretty young girl wants to be in construction?" Ms. Sherry pulled me to the side and asked me to talk about what learning construction meant to me. I stood in a room full of strangers and told them where AMI Kids will not only help me get a job, but will help me understand some skills of construction to fix my home. You see, our roof has leaks, has a leak before Hurricane Sally and now after Hurricane Sally and other storms. The roof sunk in, and if I don't want construction, there'll be no one else to fix my family home. So after I learned some skills, I will be able to fix our family home. I want to thank all the staff at AMI Kids Pensacola because without them pushing you to think outside the box and do things I wouldn't normally do, or I wouldn't have the courage to explore or expand my expectations. I know, I now believe that I can accomplish anything I set my heart to. AMI Kids changed my life for the better, and I am forever grateful for the times I spent in this program. My now plan is to earn my GED and pursue a degree in game design. Thank you.
Okay, it gives me great pleasure to introduce the next Community Development Award. Uh, this goes to Ms. Cheryl Taylor Bowie. Cheryl is the Brand Strategist and owner of our own, uh, public relations and marketing firm. Cheryl has been the driving force behind developing and producing two videos that bring awareness and raise support not only for AMI Kids at Kadena, but AMI Kids as an organization. Uh, one video was just a basic introduction of the local program, uh, which, which showed various board members and community supporters. But the other one was basically a virtual tour, which, which brought in professional videographers and videoed our kids, uh, basically giving a tour of our facility. And then she overlaid on top of that some professional, uh, uh, announcers to basically, uh, kind of reiterate and restress the points that the young men were trying to make. Uh, the, the virtual video was produced by Cheryl and has been instrumental to the entire organization during this COVID-19 pandemic. It has allowed our organization to still give tours while being safe as possible. So I would, um, wanted to hear from Cheryl, and I'm so glad she's receiving this award.
Last year was a really strange and weird year for many reasons. And one of the challenges we faced was how do we stay engaged as a board and, um, a community working with AMI Kids? Knowing that onsite tours are our best tool for introducing someone to the program and the facility, we knew it was going to be tough. Uh, we were going to be sitting on our hands because we couldn't take anyone actually to the facility. So we decided to, with a very small crew of not professional shooters, just my staff and an iPhone, um, we went into the facility and recorded a virtual tour. And it was a, a low production value, but high in terms of spirit and how the, uh, the boys and the staff rallied around this idea of virtually introducing the program. And it was very rewarding for my staff and for me. Anything we do to keep the community engaged is a good thing. And being able to send out that virtual tour kind of kept things alive in, in the year of COVID. So, on behalf of Right Angle, thank you for the honor, and we look forward to doing more things for AMI Kids.
Great, thank you, Cheryl. Okay, the next is a, uh, friend of, of the Executive Board, Charlie Noonan. Charlie's been a board member of AMI Kids Emerald Coast since 2011. During this time, he's served as Board Chair several times and as a board member. Charlie uses every opportunity to ensure that everyone he encounters knows about AMI Kids Emerald Coast and the great work we do. He is in the hospitality business, and he uses his networking connections for a few years ago that led to a, a partnership with a local wine foundation. I think it's called the Destin Wine Festival, that has brought more than $750,000 to the program over the last seven years. A conversation that was started with a stranger while out walking his dog led to $10,000 donation to the program and a vocational partnership. He is a member of the Knights of Columbus, and he makes sure that they're always, uh, remember AMI Kids when they're, the community. community donations. They consistently give about $3,000 a year for student scholarships. When he found out that our students needed bikes to get to and from work and school, he reached out to a local church and got several bikes donated. Charlie is committed to our mission as the impact of the program significantly by not only being a dedicated board member, but also allocating resources in the community and sharing our story every chance he gets. Please congratulate Charlie Noonan.
Well, good afternoon. I want to thank you very much for this award. I feel honored to be receiving an award for resource development. As I always hated asking people for money and that's what resource development does. But you know, when you have such a passion for a great organization like AMI Kids, you really don't have to worry about asking for money. People that believe in the program will support you and you just have to be available to accept the checks, so to speak. But anyway, I couldn't do it without the help of a ton of people and to name a few in the home office. Mike Thornton is a great leader and has certainly inspired me throughout the years to stay passionate about our cars. Newton Thomas has just been a great inspiration, Jerry Pucio, and of course, Obie. You gotta love Obie. But on a local level, I want to thank all my volunteers, all my board members. I want to thank the chair, Cindy and Audra. Audra is doing such a wonderful job that it is very easy to support her and her passion for taking care of the kids. So putting kids first is our mission, giving them the opportunity for a second chance and to learn their true potential is all about it. And I want to thank you again for this award and I challenge each of you to make that commitment and passion for the kids and it'll pay off. There's a big saying, "The more you give, the more you get back." And I thank the Lord every day for everything he's done for me and this is one of my ways of giving back to the kids. Have a great conference and we'll see you next year in person.
I have the, really the pleasure to give out an award called the Upstander Award. And this is named after my predecessor, Obie Standard, our CEO and 40-year staff member of the organization. The award symbolizes their dedication to making a positive change in kids' lives. This person lives our core values in their daily life and it reflects, it's reflected in their actions. This year's recipient has been a part of AMI Kids family for many years. He served as a national board chair. He currently serves as our chair of our program evaluation and development committee. He has a heart for kids and challenges our staff to look for ways to impact kids in our community. He led our initial breaking barriers initiative to improve the relationship with our kids in law enforcement. He also provided direction for our new breaking barriers initiative, which expanded to building relationships with our kids and their communities. He challenges us to develop something, he challenged us to develop something that would impact kids in the community, but not just AMI Kids, but all kids that we could share with other stakeholders who work with kids. He believes in research. He is a man of integrity, honesty, and dedication to his community and to our kids. I want to recognize Mike Newstrom as this year's Upstander Award recipient.
I received word late last week that I had been selected to receive the Upstander Award, which is of course named after or in honor of Obie Standard. And I'm very honored. I want to thank Mike and whoever else had input on that decision. Obie and I go back a few years. We're both native Louisianians. And I've enjoyed his involvement and his leadership with AMI. I think it's one of the best programs out there in the country. And I've been involved for about 15 years or so, 15, 18 years, getting AMI into Louisiana, trying to, trying to get expanded in Louisiana. NAB has been a, Obie has been a key player in that and continues to be a key player. I've talked to him recently. So I think that the values that he believes in, I think are very evident in the people that are at AMI at all levels, the top levels, the staff, and everyone else, board members, the national board members, the local board members. I think each one of those levels and people have some similar thoughts. And they're doing it, they're getting involved for the right reason. So it's an honor. I think very highly of Obie and what AMI has done and what he's done to help AMI get to that point. So it's a great award for me, a great feeling. And I think he's the one providing the leadership. And it's been a good run. So thanks for this award.
I'm going to present the Leadership Award to Troy Hebert of AMI Kids Baton Rouge. Troy supports and advocates for the Baton Rouge program on every level. He makes sure that each time they hold important events, he attends and he helps celebrate their successes. He was the driving force to help the Board of Trustees approve their give-get policy, to which each board member was satisfied with the terms that was decided. Troy is true to the AMI Kids mission and he is dedicated to ensure that we are consistently changing the lives, one kid at a time. Congratulations Troy on receiving this Leadership Award.
Well, thank you all and thank you, Mike. I really appreciate it and humbled and honored by this award. And it just goes to show you that if you stick around long enough, that they will finally get to the bottom of the barrel and obviously they have as I've gotten this award. I'd like to say, I don't remember exactly when I joined the BRMI board, but AMI Kids, but it was probably between 25 and 30 years ago. All I know is that both Hayward and I both had a full head of hair and we were both very well fit. That has changed dramatically and, but we all know that I've aged much better than Hayward has, but that's a given. But on that standpoint, I'd like to thank all of the AMI family and realize that my family has grown up at AMI Kids. My two kids have grown up going to the, to the AMI board meetings and attending the sessions. And I did that on purpose so they would realize that, kind of listened to what AMI Kids had to deal with and just realized how blessed they were. And I think as patrons and as leaders in AMI, I think we need to focus on the blessings and opportunities our kids have. All too often in this day and age, media, social media especially, will focus on the challenges that people have and the obstacles that people have. And I think we need to continue as leaders to focus for our kids and for AMI Kids that there are opportunities out there and God has blessed us with a lot of blessings. So I think if we all continue to focus on our blessings, the world would be a lot better place. So on behalf of AMI Kids Baton Rouge and everyone, I'd like to thank you all for this award. And also I'd like to end with, "Go Tigers!" Thank you.
The audio cut out. I mean, I'm pretty sure he said, "Go Gators," but regardless. I'd like to introduce one of our students, Joshua Campbell, who's from Somerville, South Carolina. Joshua currently holds the rank of corporal at White Pines. He loves to cut the grass and uses that as a coping skill to help him relax when he's feeling overwhelmed or has anxiety. Please welcome Joshua.
Good morning. How are you all as well? My name is Joshua Campbell. I'd like to share my experiences, some things I've learned and the goals I made in life. On the start, I'm telling you that I'm 15 and I was born in Somerville, South Carolina. I grew up in a small house in this neighborhood called Greenhurst. Part of Somerville that I lived at was not a nice part of Somerville. There are a lot of memories in the house that I grew up in. Some of them was good, some of them was bad. The bad memories were when my mom would take her anger from my father on me and my older sister. I also remember getting hurt when my father would come home drunk, I would cocaine and would hit me and my older sister. I used to think that my mom and dad would hit us because it's something we had done wrong. But as I got older, I realized it wasn't our fault at all. A traumatic event happened when I was eight years old was the loss of a family member due to suicide. Growing up in this environment of violence took its toll on me. My linky behavior started when I got expelled from school for having marijuana in my locker. From there, I kept getting in trouble and I was eventually placed on probation. This is when I began going to mental health and drug and alcohol classes. I was doing good until my grandfather passed away and the cold started. I started spiraling downhill after my grandfather passed away. I began doing drugs and drinking alcohol. My decisions ultimately led me to AMI Kids White Pines. This was a blessing for me. It's got me away from the negative environment and showed me ways to cope with past traumas that I've been covering up years. Since coming to White Pines, I've participated in scare streaming and learned how to deal with trauma. White Pines, while at White Pines, I learned positive coping skills such as getting involved in activities. I joined the book club and have earned many awards these months. I have increased my reading level since entering and each month I increase, I get a certificate. So far, I have increased my reading and math levels and received four certificates. Another coping skill I enjoy is cutting the grass at White Pines. Cutting the grass is therapeutic for me since it helps me deal with the trauma of losing my grandfather. I remember cutting the grass for my grandfather and it helps me accept that I do have good memories of him. I also learned that fishing is a great coping skill. White Pines has incentives each week for students with good behavior. We honor rewards such as fishing. At White Pines, I have learned job skills such as marking prices on items, stocking shelves, and working as the cashier in the can store. I have obtained my survey certificate and work on food truck cooking meals. These skills will help me with my future dream of owning my own business. I have learned that using drugs and alcohol would not help me cover up trauma. I want to take a positive role in life. My future goal is to work towards my GED and eventually own my own store called Josh Mart. Thank you for your time and letting me tell you my story.
Thanks, Joshua. I'd now like to present an award for community development. As the recipient of a Community Development Award, Ms. Beth Rainey has served as vice chair on the White Pines board for four years. This year, Ms. Rainey has contributed to tickets to the Greenville Drive Game, hosted a food drive and a hot dog sale, helped organize a cookbook, donated items for the token store, helped set up tours, and also helped students get involved in church. Ms. Rainey is an exceptional board member. We're honored to have her as part of our board. Congratulations, Beth Rainey, for your leadership in community development.
Thank you for recognizing me with this award, but the honor and privilege of serving White Pines is honor enough. You see, I don't just sit on the board at White Pines. I have the honor of serving White Pines. Q and his staff make it such a joy. They make it easy to share the AMI Kids mission with everyone I come in contact with and especially our surrounding community. To see the kids enter the program, lost, hurt, confused, angry, and then watch their transformation is such an honor. I would like to thank my fellow board members for everything we have accomplished over the past two years, for being there through every crazy idea that I might throw their way and always finding a way to make those ideas happen. To my boss and fellow board member Sandy and my employer Canteen, thank you for allowing and encouraging me to be involved at White Pines. To always saying yes and then always making a way for that yes. It truly is a partnership that I enjoy. Lastly, to Q, you are a blessing to those kids and to me. You're a great example of a humble servant. You truly make serving you, your staff, and the kids an honor. Again, thank you for this award and I look forward to many more years of sharing White Pines with our community.
Thank you, Ms. Beth. I have the honor of presenting the President's Award. This is to a team member who has made an outstanding contribution to AMI Kids' mission. This year's recipient is a team member, has been a part of our team for 26 years. I mean, excuse me, 29 years, 29 and a half to be exact. This person has outstanding work ethic, dedication to the mission, and is beyond, that's beyond question. He is normally not very vocal. I don't remember that, but this is from Maria. I think he's very vocal. But he changes that, his normal style when it comes to advocating for his team and for AMI Kids. Is the go-to person for all things related to school finance process, grant compliance, technical geeky, that's what it says, geeky accounting and tax concepts. In all, in all his years, he has been excellent, reliable, and all who know him trust him without question. He also has played an instrumental role in our new HR system and he's playing a bigger role in our finance system. I call him the answer man because he absolutely, if he does not know the answer, he will find the answer. And so this year, for the work that he has displayed, I want to recognize Devin Simon with the Eagle Award.
Good afternoon. Receiving this award for my contribution to the mission is certainly unexpected, but is very much appreciated. It is recognition of long hours and a lot of hard work, especially over the last recent years as we have embarked on upgrading our information systems. Of course, not much can be accomplished by just one person. It takes a lot of teamwork. For me, this award is really for everyone who has supported me. A very special thank you to the finance team leads, Maria Greco and Susan Johnson, and also to Martha Shafan and the entire finance team. We're the ones who make this award possible. Whether it's working through complex and detailed DJA audits, implementing a payroll system, new finance system, putting in crazy long hours to make sure we have a clean financial audit, and even visiting programs for one-on-one trainings where necessary, they continue to give it their all and I very much appreciate the team for that. I also appreciate the collaboration and the support from IT, which is so critical to us achieving our goals. Thank you to Support Services, Resource Development, and the entire operations team. At the end of the day, it is really about supporting those of you at the program who are doing the real difficult job of changing lives and changing communities. And I and the entire home office team strives to do the best that we can to support each of you. And I will continue to do so. I am honored to receive this President's Award in recognition of my small role in doing such important work. I know there are so many others who deserve it, so this doesn't really mean a lot. AMI Kids' mission is to protect public safety and positively impact as many youth as possible through the efforts of a diverse and innovative staff. I am happy to be part of an organization where our leaders create an atmosphere of trust and respect that allows for this creativity and innovation. Many thanks to our CEO, Mike Thornton, our CFO, Maria Porto Duarte, for their leadership, and to the rest of the leadership team for their continued support. Thank you.
Next, I have the pleasure of presenting our Board Resource Development Award. Not unlike the last group, this next board received this year's Resource Development Award is truly an exceptional group of volunteers, community leaders, and fundraisers. This board increased their program annual fundraising in fiscal year '21 by 30% over the This board increased their program annual, annual fundraising in fiscal year twenty-one by thirty percent over the previous year. Part of the increase came, uh, can be attributed to the annual golf tournament, the fishing tournament and together raising in excess of $60,000 for fiscal year twenty-one. In addition, this board is regularly introducing personal contacts to the mission and the program, which often leads to new friends and new gifts. Beyond inviting them for a student-led tour, this group also hosts two virtual social for social change events, bringing new friends and new funds into the program, some of which help them meet their AMI Kids Foundation Board fundraising incentive match for new money. This outstanding board of child advocates, community influencers and business people, educators and law enforcement officials are led by JB Davis in support of, uh, in support of the executive director, Carlos Valdez. AMI Kids Tampa has an outstanding year of resource development and for that reason, they are the recipient of this award. Way to go, AMI Kids Tampa.
On behalf of AMI Kids Tampa, I am honored and proud to accept the order, excuse me, the award for resource development, um, for the AMI Kids board and school. I just would like to say that I'm blessed to have a great program director and faculty at the school as well as just a wonderful board that continues to work tirelessly on behalf of the kids and AMI. Uh, and we just are thankful to be part of this program and appreciative of all the good work that everyone does in all the other programs as well as the corporate office.
Next, I have the pleasure of introducing our last student speaker. Uh, his name is Jimmy Howard, who is a seventeen-year-old young man from Richland, South Carolina. Jimmy has been in the program since August and has been, has made a positive gains by enrolling in youth build programs and working to be successful when he returns home. Please help me welcome Jimmy Howard.
I want to begin talking about two values that I have learned while at AMI Kids because these two values describe me as an individual. AMI Kids has taught me honesty, dealing with everyone who comes into contact with me in an upright, faithful fashion. I also express leadership to unite all members of a originally diverse team so as to achieve excellence. Because of my ability to show these values, I am proud to say that I have been accepted into AMI Kids Youth Build Program. Every week I participate in my NCCR class and I also learn hands-on skills in the welding shop under my instructors, Mr. Mike and Mr. Will. I'm proud to say that I have learned to stick weld and use oxy-acetylene welding techniques. I'm also a skilled plasma cutter. I have just begun my construction class and I'm glad to mention that I have a fluid understanding of construction safety. We call this JSA or Job Safety Analysis. An example of this skill would be the knowledge to wear a respirator when working in a home that may have asbestos insulation. I'm very proud to be in the Youth Build Program and I am excited to earn a good-paying competitive job when I return home. Eventually I want to attend Mittens Technical College with a focus in HVAC. First, I'm going to complete my high school education at Lord Richland High School. And when that is complete, I am going to use vocational rehabilitation to go to school for free under their scholarship program. My job recruiter, Mr. Rob, is also going to help me find a position with undeniable comfort heating and cooling near my home in Richland, South Carolina. Before we finish, I would like to also mention that I have been off campus several, several times to attend church with Mr. Guy at Mark Carmel Baptist Church. And I find that very healthy for my spiritual growth. I also get in the pool at least two times a week with our aquatics instructor, Mr. Jay. I'm proud to say that I am a level two swimmer. The pool has helped my time at AMI go by very quickly. When I swim, days turn into weeks and weeks turn into months. I would like to thank y'all for the opportunity to listen to how I have benefited from AMI Kids program so far. You know, I have only been in the program for two months. I really enjoy the atmosphere of growth and family. The culture here is very positive and a clear improvement over Mittens Evaluation Center. Thank you.
Well, I have the honor of doing the final award of the evening or the afternoon. The purpose of the winning our sales award is to recognize individuals who are responsible for contributions to AMI Kids and its mission. These contributions are not limited to monetary ones, but will encompass actions that assist AMI Kids and its mission. Uh, this year's recipient is a board member who's really the face of their board. Uh, their board faced some serious, uh, contract issues, um, a couple of years ago. And they've been working through that for the last, like I said, a couple of years. Uh, the program transitioned from a state contract to a federal contract. While the program could not conduct regular fundraising events, this board member used his contacts to help find additional funding. He put aside his interests, his personal interests and made, helped, helped us make some tough decisions to ensure the future of the program. He made an enormous contribution to AMI Kids over the years, but his leadership and contribution over the last eighteen months has been incredible and generally exemptified our kids' first value. I want to recognize Joe Lettler for this year's winning ourselves award.
Well, I have been affiliated with PMI, Penellus Marine Institute since nineteen seventy-seven, over forty-four years, and it has been a fascinating ride. From the island program to the combining institutes under AMI and then AMI Kids, changes in program offerings, et cetera. And all of that, all the way with inept bureaucracy from outside powers, but it will always be so. Nonetheless, I have enjoyed the results and so many wonderful friendships as we went along. I very much appreciate being chosen for this honor. I shall always treasure the thoughtfulness and recognition. Thanks to all.
As we close it out today, again, I want to thank you, uh, again for joining us. Um, I also want to make sure that I thank our sponsors who, um, have been incredibly generous and we couldn't do it without them. Uh, thank you to MGT Consulting, our title sponsor, ME Wilson, Hill Ward and Henderson and Marsh McLennan Agency and Bouchard Insurance. Um, I look forward to seeing each of you next year in person at our 2022 Board of Trustees meeting. And this concludes today's meeting. Thank you.